And so, um. Thank you. No, that's all right. Durango Fire Protection Board of Directors are all here with the exception of Matt, he may dial in later. So I don't know if we want to, uh, Mayor Baxter, if you want to go ahead and call to order or do a roll call?
Yeah, I think we should.
Go ahead.
It's your meeting.
I know.
This is how we do it. So. So we just go, I just, okay, so representing the city, we have Jose Madrigal, Bob Brammer, Melissa Yusef, Olivier Bosmans, Barbara Nosworthy, and Kevin Hall, and myself, Kim Baxter, and Jessica Fuel. And Dirk Nelson. I knew we came in with one more person.
Welcome Dirk.
And Scott Shines.
Great. And so, um, we're going to go ahead and move on to the agenda if you will have that in front of you. You could do a review of that agenda. So the Durango Fire Protection Board, District Board of Directors, is there any revisions, deletions? Or additions? Do I hear a motion to approve it?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Hi, May Catherine.
Jerry, yes. Go ahead, Kim.
I'm sorry, you had, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't move.
Um, we've been advised by our attorney not to show support or lack of support for any of your plans or any of that that we're going to be seeing today. So I just wanted you to know that you may not hear much from the city councils as far as recommendations or suggestions.
My excitement and enthusiasm will clearly rain over on everybody else.
I don't think they're anticipating that anyway.
Okay, I just want to make sure for the public and everybody that's listening, so if you don't see us participating much, it's not, it has, it's not a reflection on you.
Yeah, this is a vision. It's really not a set plan. Guess so you know that too. So don't have an expectation that this is the plan.
Excellent.
All right.
Yeah. So, want me to take it away?
You bet.
Okay, great. So, uh, actually, the first two items, A and B, were, um, what, from what we understood was at the request or based on conversation that the city council had had and we sensed that there was unfinished business or, or issues that we needed to do. So we wanted to include the topic of, of continuing the discussion or, or bringing to a close really an argument or discussion about an alternate location to be considered for that. And so, uh, ba- basically, I think that, uh, in an effort to try to represent what I've been told by my board and where we feel like we are, um, you know, for a thirty-eight year period since nineteen eighty-three, uh, we have been, um, at a temporary facility and trying to find replacement. Talked about this multiple times in many of the meetings. We, until very recently, have been unable to find a suitable replacement. We've got very close a couple of times. We thought that we had an opportunity to build something at the railroad parking lot site. We felt like we were maybe given one where we could negotiate for terms to purchase some other properties. Uh, at the end of the day, all of those things fell through. And so, when we had the opportunity to bid on and then were successful in purchasing the nine R school building, the historic high school, um, we were extremely excited about that. And from our standpoint, we, we feel like it, it's a little bit like if you lose your keys and you spend a lot of time looking for those keys, and at the end of the day, you find your keys, you don't look for them. And that's where we feel like we are. We feel like we searched and searched, we found a suitable replacement. We believe in the plan and our ability to do this. In fact, we believe that it's great for the community and solves some of the city's problems and assures service provision for, uh, our community for, uh, into the future. And so, we are, uh, fully focused on developing this site into the new downtown fire station. So that, that's kind of where we are. But we also understand that, um, there may be other discussion and there may be some alternate ideas from the city council. And so, we want to open the door to, i- i- if there are, or if you have alternate ideas or want us to go a different direction, we, we really want to hear.
I think the biggest thing is that we want you to know that we're open to the idea of having those conversations that, that there are some councils who think there's other locations which clearly should be discussed, um, to everybody's mind. And then down the road, if this isn't working out for you, we're open to having those discussions and we would welcome if that's what you need to do because we're in support of you having a good location. And if this one doesn't work out, there's others. That would be my take, but I'm sure there's other councilors that have some thoughts on that too.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's put this to bed. Let's, we appreciate the opportunity, but if there's anything else to discuss about this.
There's no specifics because we've had no discussion about that, but we have had the discussion. Would welcome that conversation if you choose to do so.
And I'll just, I'll, I'll just jump in and add that, uh, the ma- uh, echo the mayor's sentiment. I think it's really important that we recognize your proceeding with this decision, but to echo it, um, we are open to entertaining the past locations you've looked at and any other sites that you, um, might find accessible.
Okay. Does, does that, i- is that inclusive of offering that sites that you own as the city are available?
All sites, including ones owned by the city, are open for discussion.
Including, including how the current site where you're currently located, um, and, and, and any other city-owned properties. If along the way, in your discussions and in your analysis and design, um, you find that you want to have these conversations also concurrently, um, with, with the design that you're doing, you should just let us know. Because we, we, like the mayor said, we want you in our downtown location. You need, we know that you need to be. And we would like to just reiterate that we are available and willing to have that conversation and to work with you together collaboratively.
Yes, and then piggyback on that, the one that you mentioned specifically, the college and community, that's also obviously a conversation.
Okay. Okay. Well, I, I think that, um, you know, as we move forward, we're, we're, we're excited today because we get to show you like the, the first shot of a conceptual, uh, plan for, for what it is that we're thinking of for this site. We know that there is an extensive process to get through, you know, working with the city, the planning division and, and getting through all of the poos that you have to jump through to be able to get to the point where you can divide the site into something, get permits issued, things like that. And so, I think very, uh, very honestly, we, we are planning on moving forward with that, but very much appreciate the fact that if we end up at a stopping point or get shut out or can't move forward, we certainly, um, would want to exercise the opportunity to.
Yeah, this is great because you know, this has been our intention, is to collaborate with you and to really have these meetings where we can discuss projects, current and future. So I think that's.
Perfect. Anything else that we need to discuss on an alternate site?
I don't believe so.
All right. So, uh, next, we, uh, we, we know that there was, um, within, uh, your group and at some of the city council meetings, some discussion about the historic designation of, of the nine R building. And, um, to, to be, uh, ve- very frank with you, we, uh, were unaware as we went through the process that that was not already a long-term or permanent designation. What we found is that the, the reason behind the historic designation of that property currently is that, uh, the school district exercised the opportunity for a grant, which included among other requirements, twenty-five-year, uh, commitment to a historic designation, which sunsets, I believe, in two years from now. I think in twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-five, yeah. And, and so, uh, we absolutely have no intention of changing the historic, uh, building from the exterior perspective, other than the things that we're allowed to do under, under those guidelines. We also believe that in the development of our plan, that there will be some opportunities for us to try to garner some grant funding through historic preservation of society, among others, which would require us to re-up that status. And so, we believe fully that as we move through the process, there will be an opportunity for us to, to resubmit and, and re-designate the historic nature of the building. The thing that we don't want to do is we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we limit ourselves by stepping out and doing it. And as an example, if, uh, our plan doesn't work and we aren't able to move forward with developing what the emergency services center did, there may end up being a need for us to sell the property. And if we did that, the best opportunities for us to be able to sell that would be so that whomever it was that was buying it could do, do with it as, as they saw it. So, I'll, I'll tell you today and go on record, uh, as I have in the past, it's absolutely not our intention to change anything about that historic building that would be harmful or, uh, change the, the status as a historic building. We're really excited about the opportunity to have the historic building. In fact, our, um, our architect is working hard to design the carriage house building that where the apparatus are going to be next to it in, uh, a, a, a similar design format, so that we can actually enhance the look of the, the full site and the lot. But, uh, at, our, our, our plan moving forward is very much to try and seek the opportunity to, to do things that would enhance that, seek the opportunity to get grant funding if it's available through historic society and to designate it as a historic site as we move forward. I, I want to designate it as a historic site in perpetuity, but I, I need to do that when we've gotten the opportunity to be able to build a downtown fire station. I can't, i- i- in, in, in what's best for our organization as we move forward and trying to develop this site. We've got to take the steps in order and that would be a step that would come at the point when we were sure we're going to be able to make a, a fire station. So, that's, that's where we go.
So I don't know if you've spoken with staff or not on, about this, but there's a process that the city can go through to preserve that historic designation that isn't, um, the expense of going through whatever grants and all the other processes that you have to go through. So I don't know if you and, and the city have spoken about that or not, but it's, um, it's a much easier process and you can do it today and you wouldn't have to wait.
Yeah.
And it would preserve the building. So, um, it's there. It'll be something that the city's probably looking more into. Kevin, did you want to say anything about that process?
Well, I, I do know that Hal's been talking with staff about it and, uh, I, I think, um, we understand the FPD's position that they would like to refrain from the additional, uh, designation until such time they have certainty on the direction that they're headed. Uh, I don't have a lot to add in terms of the process. There is a process in which the city can take action to designate, uh, a greater, uh, preservation authority over the building. However, there's also a process in which we work closely with DFPD on what that looks like at the appropriate time. And the staff discussions up to this point has been, uh, we feel confident that the, uh, preservation of the building as it exists today, there's a commitment by DFPD to, to make sure that, uh, continues. Uh, if there's a desire to do something different, then we will talk about how we proceed on an alternative path or a, a higher level of designation.
Yeah. And, and I, I think that the interests of all those that want to designate it as a historic building are protected currently under the fact that we, we, we are still within that, that window under which we're, uh, very limited on what, uh, changes could be made or things that could be done based on the, the grant that was there and, and the current stuff. I've got to tell you that the staff was actually wonderful in offering their help in looking through that process, talking to us about what that might look like. Uh, in, in fact, it's my plan to go down and schedule a meeting to, to have that conversation and see what's involved in the process, see how that works and what that does for us as far as opening doors to be able to, to substantiate greater funding and things like that. I, I think that it's a really good idea. I think for the community, we really want to make sure that we take action now that we own the building to, to protect it for, you know, in perpetuity. We, we just don't want to take an action now that prohibits us from being able to develop it into the site that we want it to be. And, and, and I think that the community needs it to be in order to serve them. So that's, that, that's where we are. Good? Okay. Moving right along. The, the next is really the, the, the big point of the meeting. And I'm, I'm really excited to be able to show you what we're going to show you next. I want to remind everybody that these are all in draft format and so, no- nothing is, uh, set in stone, literally and figuratively, uh, yet. But we are, uh, we have arrived at a point where we're ready to be able to show you what we believe the, the, the concept for the site, uh, might look like. And, um, based on the direction that, um, the city council gave to the city manager and the police chief, Chief Black and Chief Brammer have been working pretty extensively on assuring that all of the needs are met for both organizations. And so, uh, we're going to present to you, uh, basically, the, um, conceptual, uh, site layout. And then we're going to show you the historic building and what we believe the, 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 or the first draft really of the floor plan looks like there. And, uh, and then we're going to show you what we believe the carriage house facility would look like, which is the blue or the, the purplish blue there that is, uh, that, that is, uh, going to, uh, replace the big picture school building as it, it currently sits. So, uh, with no further ado, I'd invite Chief Black and Chief Brammer to, to take off and, and talk through what the site looks like.
So this is, just so you all know, this is the first time, with the exception of Chief Dowdy, Chief Brammer, myself, and I believe Jose probably is, uh, may have received a copy of this, and then, um, Tracy that we've been working with. This is the first time. So if any of you have questions or specifics, ask as we go because this is your, both boards, council. So any questions you have, um, feel free to ask as we go along. And again, this is probably draft three of two hundred. So, um, none of this is even close to in stone. It's barely in ink at this point. So, um, just so you can get a rough layout, the, the police department is going to be on the west side of the building with some covered parking. Um, obviously, this is the historic.
Randy, may I?
Yes.
So, if we could speak in possibilities rather than the police department is going to be there because these.
That's, that's all conceptual.
I know, but we need to be really careful because if somebody tuned in to listen and they heard that, they would assume that there had been a decision made already.
Okay.
Council has not even begun to discuss this question.
Okay. This would be, um, the two, as Chief said, uh, the two dark purple locations would be the, uh, drive-through bays and the, the back-end bays over here with, um, quarters over the top that we'll get to further on and you'll be able to see, uh, further layout. So any board members or council members have any questions before we move to the next slide?
So both purple, um, buildings will have living quarters or just the one on the left?
Both, and I'll show that to you. We've got actually a, um, floor plan, early floor plan. Just trying to put offices, bunks, bedrooms and everything to lay out where this becomes the fire station. This is office. So just as it is now, this basically stays, um, almost identical use-wise to what it is now. Where it just continues to be office space.
And what is the light blue again?
Those are covered parking spaces.
Okay.
For the, um, for the, i- if the PD.
Okay.
Ends up over there, then we've got covered parking so they're not having to clear snow off and it just basically protects those vehicles, gets them out of the sun, um, and provides some additional protection.
Nice. Okay.
Part, part of our planning process involved, uh, wanting to know what the spatial requirements were for all of the vehicles that the police department had, as well as the, uh, as well as, uh, fire department spatial needs for parking. And so, uh, what, the, the number that Chief Brammer gave us was between, uh, police cruiser parking and, um, daily staff parking that would need to be there. We needed sixty spaces to accommodate his current and, and possibly future needs for parking there. A big part of our, uh, concept or, or plan moving forward with this is to create enough space to be able to park all of the police, if the police join us, and the fire units onsite rather than on-street parking or, or at metered parking. And that's going to hopefully allow us to create the opportunity for the city to actually, uh, potentially gain metered parking spaces through the course of us, um, m- moving the fire department and, and potentially police department to this site.
And then to be clear, Hal, you have those sixty spaces in this design right here.
I did not actually count the spaces, but I know that that was the working number we were heading towards. So I, I would absolutely tell you that I believe we have that solution done and the sixty spaces are, are present as well as parking for the fire, yes.
All right. There's no other questions here. I want to just kind of roll into floor plans a little bit, if that's okay. Chief Brammer, do you want to talk about this lower level? And, um, just so you know, um, and there's square footage tallies over here, but what we're looking at here, the purple spaces are combined. So this is the, the joint areas that we both have use of. If the PD comes in, then these would be both PD and fire department. Green would be PD only in this plan. So.
And that's the ground floor.
Correct. This is the lower level.
There's three stories.
Correct. Um, plus the basement, which is, um, will hit as well. So this shows, um, this is basically entrance to the new lobby. So this is our ADA entrance. So that's why everything's at ground level. But when we're looking at the flow of the building, um, and you'll see the different color layout, that's just the color patterns that we've used to easily be able to kind of decipher as we go. Chief Brammer, do you want to go through this floor?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief Black. Um, good afternoon, board and, uh, council, or good morning, actually. So, um, so I went to a design consulting, uh, conference a couple of years ago with Levi Lloyd, um, to discuss the flow and what modern police departments look like. I was tasked recently with, uh, through the city manager in order to see if this building could potentially, conceptually meet our needs as far as our, our square footage goes. Um, the city in the past has did a, um, a, a needs assessment, uh, through a life group in two thousand and fifteen. It established some ground square footage that, of what that could be. As I went through the, the consulting company's, uh, uh, needs assessment, it, it came out to a little bit of different numbers. So, um, when we're looking at this total shared space, that's what makes this building potentially work for the police department in this partnership. Currently, right now, the police department is about fourteen thousand square feet. Um, as you, as noted in the, uh, lower left corner of this, uh, slide, you can see that the, the PD designated space is about sixteen thousand square feet. When we looked at the ground level of this, we, we thought this would be more of an operational section for the, uh, police department and to be able to share some additional, uh, space with the fire department. So if you look on the, on the bottom part of that screen, you'll see that's where the patrol division would be. And then on the, uh, other top portion of that screen, you'll see that's where the investigations division is going to be. Uh, it's real critical that those units work together, uh, in order to collaborate and just to be functional i- in regards to how we're going to try to fulfill our mission by solving and preventing crime. Also unique to this building was the, uh, the backyard, which used to be the pool, which is currently a maintenance shop. Uh, that right there is, is very secure and that also provides, uh, area for our, our potential property room to be moved to. Currently, right now, our property needs are about seventeen hundred square feet that we have in this building. And, uh, we're full. We're completely full. We're using shelving spaces that goes upstairs, um, and such. And this provides, um, just a little over, um, I think twenty-five hundred square feet total to include modern facilities for labs and for evidence processing as well as offices. So it's a unique square footage, uh, the footprint that actually works out and we'll be able to share it. The purple area in the middle, uh, Chief Black and I spoke about this, that would be a shared concept, uh, for a workout area, which again would meet some of our training facility needs, um, if this was to move forward. Uh, it has a full-size basketball court in the middle of it right now. Currently, we're training out of a garage, out of our substation where we have to roll Matt out and, uh, for our rest control and for, um, our defensive tactics. And, uh, it also has the, the capacity for a, a locker room. And that locker room would actually be a unisex locker room, um, which would be able to share space so that, uh, we're not allocating space that wouldn't be used based off of, um, you know, gender proportionality. Um, this is a modern concept. It would have changing rooms in it. It would allow people to use those, but all that space would always continually be used. And, uh, w- i- if we move forth with our inclusiveness, um, and our DEI efforts, one of the comments that we frequently get from our female officers is they, uh, before and after shift, they sometimes feel a little bit secluded because they're not in the locker room with everybody else. Either prepping for a shift or not. Um, so it's kind of a, a unique opportunity and we've, we've heard great success from across the country, um, integrating that locker room as it is.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Before we go.
Yeah.
Um, just, just to point out, we, we've talked a lot in the previous meetings about the, um, uh, economies of scale associated with being able to have police space, fire space, and the shared space. And so I, I feel like in each one of the cases that we're looking at here, the police department has the opportunity to benefit from the six, I, I'm not.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet of dedicated space. But to that, we add the shared space as well, which is nineteen, nineteen thousand. So, um, each of us as agencies has the opportunity to really expand the amount of user space that we have. And, and we think that, um, a great deal of that usable space i- is going to be, um, things like the big auditorium. So that we could each, uh, alternately house a, a, a large gathering of people, uh, several hundred potentially. We have the opportunity for the gymnasium space. All those things that both agencies need, we're viewing as, as dual-use or, or shared space. And it just really expands the opportunity each one of the agencies has with, uh, with regards to, to this bill.
Any other questions on this floor? All right. We'll go to the next one. And Chief Brammer, since you're unmuted, I'll let you hit the, starting. I'll let you grab the, the PD section first and then I'll talk through the fire section.
Copy that. Thanks, Chief Black. Um, so the second floor, which is going to be more of the public, uh, facing portion of this, if, if it's the way under this design concept, um, is more the administrative side. So, most of our interactions come through our lobbies of the police department and that either has to deal with property or it has to deal with records and it's mainly the records technicians. Uh, so i- i- this would be an open, shared area in the middle. And then the portion of the police department that could potentially be here would be our administrative section. So it would be our recruiting sergeant, our, our digital technician, um, that frequently interacts a lot with the, the public as well as the district attorney's office. We'd have our administrative commander on this level, as well as our community programs and our training sergeants, as well as just basically the, the records technicians. So, um, it, it's so, and then there's a joint area as well in the middle, which could be very, uh, easily converted over into a public meeting space and, and a large training room, which would allow the police department potentially to host trainings, as well as town hall meetings. Uh, you know, any interaction we have, it's, it's, it's a, it's a large, very functional room. And, you know, partnering with the, uh, the, the fire department on that also allows that room to, to be utilized for other means as well, um, through our community engagement efforts.
So for the fire department perspective, this is, um, again, as Chief Brammer said, because this is that main entrance where you come in, most of the folks that come to the fire department want the prevention bureau. That's where the builders, the constructors, designers, um, all those folks are coming in here. So this is the fire marshal's office, plans reviewers, inspectors, community education, fire marshal. Um, we've got a conference room. There's a shared conference room. Tracy did a great job with this, um, reception area where you've got a, a counter to where you come into the public area. And obviously, we've got some signage that would need to happen, but you come in, if you need the fire department, you come here. If you need the PD, if that works out, then they would be here. Then they would be, um, able to, to provide the access through secure doors into each of those locations. Um, and just referencing the, the meeting room, um, the occupancy load on this was two hundred and eighty-three, I believe, prior to us expanding. When we were walking this the other day, the whole area back behind the stage had been unused and was about eight or ten feet. If we push that back and basically elevate that portion for, um, presentations, board meetings, whatever we would want to have back there, it actually opens that up even further to where we're probably pretty close with the additional square feet. At three hundred people would be the occupancy load in, in that meeting room area.
We see the opportunity for all of the shared space to potentially, uh, be community use as well. Part of our, uh, purchase agreement was that. Uh part of our uh purchase agreement was that the school board was interested in still being able to schedule and have uh board meetings in the auditorium space. Um a- and and so we've agreed to that. We think that community use as far as, you know, the opportunity for community programs or large meetings that may not have anything to do with the fire department or police department could exist in in the building as well. We uh could make that available so that so that the entire community could benefit from that. Uh similarly, a lot of the shared conference room space um we think could be used in a in a community use fashion as well.
Any other questions on this floor?
Oh, and one more thing. Uh i- in general concept, and and Chief Black and Chief Bremer mildly touched on it. But um all of the design uh focus on this was also so that the building could be secured appropriately for both fire and police operations needs. And so the purple areas or joint use space in in general is unsecured area or public access area. And the police department side and the fire department side are both uh secured with um similar e- and entry tags or the the current city system that the fire department also shares.
We're both using that same vigilante system, so that works great from the access control, isn't that? All right, next floor is going to be the the top floor. Again, Chief Bremer, I'll let you um cover your part first and then I'll go into ours.
Okay, thanks, Chief Black. Uh so this would be more of the executive level, I guess is kind of the best way to term that. I- if this is the direction it would go. Um this is where the chief's office, the deputy chief, our administrative assistant, our professional standards and internal affairs uh unit would be housed. And it would be more of a secure level as well, just because it's um on the third floor, so it's not quite as accessible. Um you know, nobody comes to my end of the building anyway, so the third floor would be a great place for for me um in the future. Yeah, if that's the possibility for this building, but the the layout absolutely works out um for this if ne- if if approved. Uh there was also some additional space there for a tactical operations center, which um would be on this floor as well. That would be beneficial, especially in the combination of the partnership between the fire department and the police department. Since we run so many large-scale activities and events in, you know, the the central downtown area. Um this would be where that could be actually run from, or if there was more of a city-centric type um emergency that we could combine. And we need to have some command and control um outside of the Lopata County ULC. Um and then there's also a need, uh because we don't have a uh dispatch center, backup center currently right now. So we just have one primary site and that's it. Uh so that was another consideration we were looking at, was to be able to put a couple consoles in there where dispatch, if there was a major incident down in the Bodo side area, that they could relocate up here and we can continue um our continuity of operations um through through this potential area. And a- again, there's an executive kind of uh work area and a combined conference room as well. It's uh that we could jointly share and operate between our two organizations.
So for the the fire department perspective, one of the things that we needed to do when we were looking at the space areas, the balcony is what used to exist in this location. And it has been closed for, um nobody seems to know exactly somewhere in the ten to fifteen, twenty-year range as it was structurally failing and needed to be rebuilt. Um and that was one of the reasons why I addressed the occupancy load of the lower level was we didn't feel like we needed to have the balcony in as well. And fire codes for balconies are pretty challenging. And so if we repurpose that into some office space, it actually really helped the flow and and helped meet our needs currently and into the future and provided some some unique opportunities to us. So this section that prior um used to be the balcony area is basically like the EMS pods. What's the EMS chief, administrative assistant, medical director? We've got flex offices and then we've also provided, um and again, this is um conceptual and ideas that that we're offering out um is um the both the police department and the fire department have um or contract with the city for IT. Now the employees are actually with the IT department, but we're providing offices for them. And whether they share a space or whether they each have a space here, um with the access control, the um network capabilities and everything in this building, it's going to be a a pretty big deal. And I think there was some question as to where um city IT might even end up geographically. And so having a space or an office down here, um seemed like that might work. And then we'll also have like an IT room for them to help control, and we've got that on a couple of different floors. Um other than that, again, this becomes our administrative offices in in our areas, similar to what um Chief Brammer said, where this is the executive floor. This is where we've got offices and basically our administration, HR, finance, and and the rest um on this floor. Um any questions on this floor before we?
W- one of the things I'd like to point out also is that as as you look at the designation for some of the offices, what you'll find is that you may see some things that you're not currently familiar with. And that was our opportunity to build into plan for expansion for the future. And so we actually have found that in designing this for the police department as our invitee, that we really want to come and share its space with us and the fire department. Um we we each had the opportunity to be able to uh pre-designate areas for growth. So as an example, the fire department only has one deputy chief currently, uh but you can see that there are two deputy chief offices that are planned. The flex offices are um offices that will be designed, equipped, and open to be able have o- overflow staff, light-duty personnel, whatever work in now, but are a future opportunity for us to move a- as the police department grows, as the fire department grows, which as our community grows, that those organizations are going to have to grow. And so this gives us the opportunity not only just to house our current operation, but to truly have a room for growth in the future.
Right. Um so this is the actually the basement floor. So it when you come in at ground level, that's that floor where the PD was going to be. Then you come up to the main entrance where we said is fire prevention and and kind of operations and then administrative. When you go down a floor, this is actually the floor where the gymnasium floor level is. And there's currently um kind of some locker rooms and some some weird spaces back there that we could configure out. But um we feel like there's enough space back there um to create some weight rooms, some storage for some of us, um some additional supply stuff. So not a lot on that lower floor because of the height issues and the access issues, but it did create some space to allow for us to get into there. Chief Brammer, you have any comments on this floor? Okay. All right, so this is um that carriage house concept that we were talking about that was the dark purple on the original plan that we looked at. Um these would be drive-through bays that we would come through. This is the turnout room where we store our bunker gear. There's utilities where we wash our gear and be able to drive in. Um then you would come over and there would be four back-in bays in this location and some storage to take up for the space that that we currently have some gear over here. Um and this would house our battalion chief, um a brush truck, an extra ambulance, and the EMS captain would be up in those locations. And then this would be ladder truck engine, medic unit, medic unit. It's basically the kind of the current flow right now. And then the plan um for the usability space over the top of that is where we, again, this is becomes the fire station is separate. So this becomes all new um concept that we can uh meet best practices and industry standards as far as air control. Um the bunker gear storage is all, there's requirements for all that, that we're meeting at Station Three is currently one of the only stations that we have the ability to do that and one of our huge challenges downtown. So you can see we've got the training room, we've got offices, we've got a lot of bunk rooms, we've got bathrooms, dayroom kitchen. So basically, this becomes the fire station is this section here where the crews, other than workout, is the only time. Um and that's, there's actually an access down below where we would have a uh Tracy was kept correcting me the other day. I don't remember the right word for it, but a um covered path or something the between the two. So if they're working out, they can quickly get into the apparatus bay. That's our main focus is being able to get the crews to the trucks to respond. That's always when we did have done everything in this building, it's about the flow and the speed of the crew's response to be able to get out the door when there's a call. If that is the rest, any other questions on this? And I'll toggle back to the meeting.
Okay. So that's that's what all our excitement has been about is we we actually the uh the plan for the um the layout of the carriage house with the the floor plan above and things like that just came in two two days ago, Randy.
This last verse, it came out last night.
We, yeah, we we had actually planned on coming here to just show you the conceptual site layout and and the uh the admin building and and we were happily surprised by Tracy with the the plan for the others as well. So that's a, that's that's the work that we've been doing. That's that's where we are so far in the development of what um we believe the the use of the property and and the plan will look like. Um that the I I've got to commend the the planning and development staff. They've been um exceptional uh for us to work with a- as usual. Um we've had uh now we've had two uh joint meetings with uh one was with uh Nicole and staff to go over basically what all the requirements were going to be as we move forward. So we knew what we needed to do to get to the point where we could uh submit our our site plan for review. Um and we recently uh last week had, the week before last, I guess, had the second uh meeting, which started out being just about talking about spatial needs and adjacencies and things like that was the intent. But it turned into a much bigger focus and uh uh Mr. Madrigal, as well as uh many of the planning and development folks were involved in that meeting and we were able to talk through a lot of things, historic designation. Uh they made some great offers to us, helping us understand what what the opportunities were for that things. And I I believe that we're on track to keep moving forward and um start trying to satisfy the needs that we'll have to provide in order to do our supplemental for uh the the start of the planner process.
Hey, can I ask a couple of questions?
Is that? Yes.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes.
On the on the drawings, it shows uh four drive-through base and then the uh backup parking base. Is that, is that really all the vehicles you have, or do you have even less vehicles than that?
No, it it's actually um we we are um trying to meet the needs of the downtown uh core area. Um currently at River City Hall, we we have running out of there. Correct me if I'm if I'm mistaken here, but we have a ladder truck, an engine, um a medical supervisor, uh two ambulances, one spare ambulance, and a brush truck. Is that correct?
I don't know if we have this going anywhere else. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct. Okay, yep. So so that's they're confirming that that's correct if if you can't hear them. Um we need to protect the downtown area, uh ladder truck, which the ladder truck that we've purchased for the downtown area doesn't fit in our current station. But that would be the ladder truck that will be at the the new station uh downtown. Uh it's currently housed here because it doesn't fit in River City Hall.
Right.
Um an engine, uh the and and then the two ambulances that serve uh the the downtown area. Our call volume is so high in the downtown area that we got to the point where we couldn't cover that call volume with just one ambulance. So we have actually two ambulances and and two crews down there. In the side areas, not the drive-through bays, but the side areas, that would be the battalion chief, which is the shift commander that's in charge of uh uh a- all the operational stuff on each day that we work. Um room for a spare ambulance and the brush truck. And and those are necessities for the area, especially when we're operating two ambulances. Go down at two o'clock in the morning to answer a call and the ambulance doesn't start. We need to immediately be able to have a backup. And so at each place that we have a live ambulance crew, we try to have a backup unit there as well. Um and so uh we we believe that the layout that we've designed here meets our needs. Um we are currently staffed uh equipment-wise with the same level of programming and staffing that you're seeing on the plans that are drawn there.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed a very, very low number, so that's uh adequate. And uh it it's good, less less heavy vehicles, makes less noise, I guess. And then what what I missed a little bit in the presentation, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Just uh Chief Chief Bremer and Chief Darian and then Black. Um I think that was very clear. What I missed a little bit in the presentation is the exterior. Maybe you can touch briefly upon some of the concerns that came out of our community, which would be uh the trees, uh one of them. Uh parking spaces uh on public uh along the roads. Because you addressed parking on property, is that adequate? Do you expect? And even simple stuff like, is there bike racks for people that come to work on that location? And uh anticipated and just maybe to address some of those concerns.
You bet. I'd love to take a shot at that. So um the the uh on the topic of the trees, um what we did was in collaboration with uh the city council's desires and uh in working with uh nine R as we moved toward closing on the property. Um we made a decision that we we um heard the community's concerns. We did not want to um i- i- in an unhealthy manner disrupt what the community is has become used to using Buckley Park for. I I certainly didn't want to be the Grinch that stole the sledding hill from the children of Grandville, which I was accused of. And so we agreed to move the property line and take a smaller amount of property that we actually closed on that um disincluded uh e- every bit of the parklands. Can you put the site plan back up so we can kind of point that out? Um so all of the large mature trees that are in Buckley Park and the sledding hill are still a part of Buckley Park and not under the fire department's control. Uh further along the line of the trees, um I actually got the opportunity to meet with, she loves it when I call her the tree lady. But we met on site and and she talked with me about the concerns that she had and and other things. And so what we did in the the wake of that meeting was the fire department are are not tree experts. When we have wildland fires, man, not cutting down trees, which I know is not what anybody wants to hear. But you you as a city have an arborist and have a program already actively in place to to manage the urban forests. And so we felt like it was in our best interest to leave control of what happens with those trees to you. So um as you can see, the dark line that outlines the exterior uh boundary of the parking area, I believe is correct in designating the new boundary line. The dotted kind of weirdly shaped uh polygon there is the old edge of the current parking lot that is there. And so you can see that the parking lot space that we're talking about developing here overlays and is diminished a bit in size from what the the current, if if you went there today and looked at the parking surface area, uh our plan is straight-lined and diminished from that. We felt like that gave us the best opportunity to um give responsibility for the mature trees in in Buckley Park, save the sledding hill with the the uh children and and the public use of that in mind and and to create an environment where we were doing our best to be good partners with the city and and the community uh when we heard the concerns and needs that they had specific to the trees, specific to the sledding hill and specific to not wanting the fire department in any way to have any control over what happened at Buckley Park. We we heard that and we agreed to the plan and closed on the property that was reflected in that. Um second, uh that was the issue on the trees, um parking. So um in uh in general, our concern, uh as I said earlier, was that we wanted to create a plan that provided the opportunity to park all of the potential employees with potentially the police department and the fire department administration, our daily workload uh or or staffing load um and visitors uh on-site without having to use off-site metered parking. Um currently, I think you're all aware that the police department has uh many designated sites that are for police parking only around their current facility. And uh I I'm told that most of the staff that comes in to work shifts ends up needing to park on Third Avenue uh where there's free parking and then walks to the police department to get into their assigned uh patrol vehicle for the day. And what we are hoping is that we're creating a plan here that will park everybody on-site and solve that problem. Therefore, alleviating a lot of the parking that's currently being used on Third Avenue by police uh employees. Therefore, also creating the opportunity to create metered spaces in in those places if that's what you chose to do or however that building ended up getting used beyond the police department's being there. And um and to move forward with that. Um I know that one of the big community concerns is Twelfth Street. And the the current congestion that already exists in the section between Second Avenue and Main Avenue. and, uh, the current congestion that already exists in the section between Second Avenue and Main Avenue. And we're keenly focused on that. Uh, I think that as we move forward and we commission the traffic study and we, um, we work with those professionals that that do that for a living. I think that we have a plan in mind that we're going to propose that would, uh, solve the congestion problem on 12th without diminishing the total available parking spaces. And that seems almost magical if we could make that happen. Um, 12th Street is already a problem. We we hear the community when they say that. We know that that's already a concern and we know that that's one of the solutions we're going to have to arrive at in order to be able to get the city council to support this plan and move forward. And so we're working really hard on that topic and we think that we have some some good solutions.
So one or the other in that same vein, one of the other big concerns is Main Street and the fact that it gets closed quite frequently for events. Um, so are you taking that into account and if it's closed, how are you going to ingress and egress?
Yeah, yeah, so so we know that's a concern. I don't have great answers for that yet, but we we very much are thinking about that in in the way that we're thinking about what this looks like. We're, uh, we're working really hard to get a traffic engineer on board because we believe that the traffic study, especially, uh, specific to, um, community development has made it clear to us that they would like us not only to do just a regular traffic study, but a large truck or a commercial truck study as well. And so we're aiming toward completing both of those studies as as a part of our supplemental for the the site plan when when we get to that point. Um, and and we know that we've got to have answers to those things prior to, um, coming with that. So I don't have a a solid answer for you yet, but we know that that's an issue. Um, one of the things that we, um, also are concerned about is, you know, the 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 current request for the the bump outs and the expanded spaces along Main. And we've worked really closely with the city to be successful with that, even including bringing our new ladder truck downtown and setting it up in between there to show that the turning radius has worked and that we have the ability to reach the buildings with that thing. And 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 I think that, um, you you can count on us to come to the table with just as 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 much cooperation and a good plan for for answering to those questions. I I know that if I can't answer those questions, I don't get to build this fire station. So I I'm I'm very clear on that.
Are you also going to be doing a study that shows like your response times and your response paths, like where you would go for what?
Yeah, so so on a much larger scale, that work is already happening between community development and the fire marshal's office. Where what we're trying to do is we're trying to to, uh, and and C dot is involved in it as well. We're trying to designate what our major, uh, thoroughfare or arterial routes are for response and then secondary routes and then smaller neighborhood routes. And we know that, uh, just from the the prospect of what it looks like to try to do that community development job, that's that's a a need that already exists, not only related to this station, but in in perpetuity for the development of of emergency services responsible through the community. So that work is already going on, but there will absolutely be strong designation of traffic flow patterns and what routes we intend to use to get to what areas of our community.
Something that occurs now currently with the current plan
Yeah.
um, is people coming up, uh, East Second, go through the property and down to town, so down to say, um, City Hall, for example.
Mm-hmm.
So people walks are there, they bikes are there.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't see any access for, um, multimodal, if you will, to, um, get from Rutherford Park, for example, up Second and into that section.
Yeah, so a couple of answers to that question. Um, in our first joint meeting with community development, um, the director, I believe, of the multimodal, having trouble remembering her name.
Um, Sarah.
So it was was at the meeting and we had, she had, she actually talked about the wanting to form that connection. And I I committed, that was prior to the discussion on the trees and the redrawing of the lines. What I suggested was potentially, um, the development of a biking path that would cut in between the, uh, emergency service center, uh, parking area and Buckley Park. We don't any longer have that property that's part of Buckley Park, but we we would absolutely support the development of that. In fact, um, I I would I would say that maybe collaboratively, we could work together to do that while excavation work was going on 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 site for the development of the parking area. It might be a great time to do that. I'm I'm not at all, um, I I I think it'd be a great idea for us to have some sort of a cut through or an opportunity for a walk slash bike path to go through between Buckley Park and the emergency service center. The other thing I I would point out is that there's there's currently an alleyway, which is uh, between Second Ave and Third Avenue there that goes on the east side of the property. And that was always, that that was a security easement so that they could move buses through that area. And it cuts between the backyards of the, uh, mortuary and the residences that are on that, uh, fa- facing lots and the, um, uh, emergency service center. We've worked really hard not to diminish that, um, because it's, uh, it's needed for, uh, use by the mortuary to get, they they actually do deliveries in through the back there. And there, uh, are are easements, uh, with, uh, Mr. Shaw and and his property to be able to get through that and access that. So, um, that is another possibility for the multimodal or bicycle pathway through, um, near the property. What what I'm proposing is what what I do both. I mean, I I'm I'm in for if we want to place a bicycle path next to the parking area there and have the ability for bicyclists, pedestrians, whomever, to be able to cut through that alleyway. Um, neither one of those things would be disruptive to the plans that we're laying for the emergency services provision to the people.
Counselors, do you have any questions or comments? We can't see you all, so you raising your hand might not work, you might have to speak.
Mr. Bossman's had one more element to his question. If I could just quickly answer this, it was related to the exterior design of the building. We don't yet, um, have, and Tracy's on on the call as well, but I I I don't yet have, uh, conceptual drawing of what the outside of the, um, of the carriage house building, the apparatus bay building is going to look like. Um, I actually started down a path of saying that we'd like to design it very similarly to the design of the historic building. Um, actually, the the folks with the historical society are architect and, um, and your planning and development folks said, that's a bad idea, don't do that. Do do a similar type of, uh, of, uh, an exterior finish, but don't try to match it up because you never can get that right and it doesn't end up looking right. And so I I I I hope I'm not misspeaking here when I say that I think that the plan moving forward is to do very much, uh, 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 period appropriate look for a matchup to the historic building without trying to exactly mirror or match the design features of that of that historic building.
So, um, um, counselor, those were the I believe, had a hand up.
Yes, thank you, I have a a comment and then I also have a question for the chief. Um, first of all, since the public is participating or listening to this, I wanted to say that for Buckley Park, that additional space does come at a cost, which the city is in negotiations with the nine R on. So it was not a gift or any kind of exchange, there's an additional value placed on that um, additional space and the city will be addressing that. Uh, my question for the chief is, um, we've also had questions about noise and comments about noise level. And so could you talk about when sirens might be turned on or just trucks pulling out of the space and and what that, no, from a noise point of view, what that might sound like?
Sure, um, so so one of, I I feel like one of the best answers to that question is that to to a certain extent, the proof is sort of already in the pudding. And what what I mean by that is that, um, as an example, when we look at doing the expansion at Station Three, um, there were some businesses that were directly adjacent to that property that had some pretty major concerns. Um, they they actually showed up and and commented on that at the, um, at the, um,
Planning Commission.
The planning commission meeting, right? And what we told them is that we work really hard to be good neighbors and not to be disruptive to the the neighborhood or the community that we're in. Um, from a response standpoint, we participate in a a a nationally developed and recognized um, dispatching system that provides for us the opportunity for the dispatcher, based on the information that they get, to make a recommendation for, uh, code or non-code response. Basically, a code response is that response with lights and sirens, the the thing that you see on TV when the doors open and 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 lights are blaring and all that stuff. That's really not the way that we do that at all, even on our code responses, which are a a great deal less than a third of the total responses that we have. Um, we we do not turn on the lights and sirens a- as we're rolling out of the apparatus bay. It's it's bad for our employees, it's bad for the neighbors. And quite frankly, that's not where we encounter traffic problems where we need the lights and sirens. I would, I would say, second of all, the the other technologically, uh, advanced system that we utilize that we've actually recently gotten an expansion on our authority to use it with C dot because of this particular question, has to do with the trap, uh, traffic preemption equipment that we have on the apparatus. And what that is, is it's a synchronized flashing light that that we have on every one of our emergency response vehicles that, um, allows us to project forward a beam of light that changes the traffic lights in our favor. And so the way that that system works is that it changes the traffic lights in the direction that the fire truck is is traveling to be green. And then any incursion traffic, it changes to either flashing yellow or reds. So it stops perpendicular traffic and it flashes yellow for, uh, parallel traffic, allowing the traffic in front of the fire truck to continue moving and a stop or slowdown of all the additional traffic. Now, um, C dot has some really strong rules associated with how we use that because it takes, in some cases, as many as six or seven full traffic cycles to get back in sync with the rest of them, uh, with with the rest of the traffic, uh, lights. But we explained to them how we'd like to use that related to the movement of emergency traffic downtown. And they granted us the authority to do that, which is we don't have to be running lights and sirens in order to be able to use the traffic preemption equipment. We can turn a traffic preemption on but not be running lights and sirens, which in most cases, if the traffic preemption is working and the the traffic is still moving, we don't need lights and sirens in order to be able to get through that. So we feel like that's a a an added benefit that will reduce the amount of times that that you you see us having to run lights and siren downtown. Um, finally, um, at at the end of the day, we get Christmas cards from the folks that were concerned about the noise that we were going to make out at Station Three. Right next to us is assisted care living facility and, uh, controlled rent or 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 lower income, uh, housing. And and, uh, directly behind us is a counseling service that, uh, caters or specializes, uh, 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 among other things to people that are dealing with PTSD and things like that. So there was some real concern from the neighbors about the amount of noise and how much effect that would have on them. And we we literally get no complaints or concerns a- about that at all. And I I think it's because the men and women that work for us understand that, one, they don't need the license sirens to be able to get out and onto the road there. And two, just like they wouldn't want that going off next to their house, they they aren't going to operate that equipment in an area where it's going to be disruptive to the community. And so I I I understand the community's hesitance about that and concern for that and things like that. But I I can tell you that in, we we operate sixteen fire stations. All of them are where people are because that's where we have to serve. And then in in, uh, all those cases, I I think that that, you know, people, people are happy with us being. I actually had a visitor at my house a few months ago who's a a major commercial real estate developer in, uh, in, um, in South Carolina. And he said, I wish that this was happening in my community because I would try to buy up every piece of property I could around there because the properties that are adjacent to fire stations in city environments like he's in go for a premium. People want to be there, that whole Norman Rockwell-esque sort of of, um, environment that that provides. And so I think that in the long run, I I get, I understand when these folks say we're concerned about what's going to happen to the value of my house. I don't, I don't want to do anything that's going to mess people up. I don't believe that what we're doing is going to mess people up. I believe that it's going to enhance the neighborhood. We're going to be great neighbors, you're going to get even better service than you're getting current. That's that's where I think we're going with this and that's why I'm so committed to to this project.
Counselors or staff, any more questions or comments?
Thank you, thank you, chief. Um, I just want to say I appreciate you hearing the community concerns and like trying to, um, answer those as soon as you can. Like, you know, the Buckley Park closure of Main and you're not tearing down trees off of 12th Avenue. Um, cause that is a huge concern. Like, I I feel like there's a there's themes from our community and I they just want to be heard and that you're that you're, um, going to address them as soon as you can, if that makes sense. And so I think that I appreciate that. Um, and the exterior of the admin trees closures on Main Buckley Park, I think those are all, you know, big common themes that we've heard and so I appreciate that.
Melissa, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, um, couple of questions, please. So I didn't hear in the discussion of the exterior, if there will be efforts to, uh, you talked about the carriage house, but for the main building, the historic main building, um, will there be efforts to keep that the same?
Yes, absolutely. Our our intention is there, there are some maintenance type things that need to be done. And the the most recent, uh, historic society grant that they got was for the purpose of two things. It was to, um, change the windows and modernize the windows and it was to, uh, create a a a stronger roofing system associated with that. And, um, and so we we know moving forward that, I mean, we're we're moving into a building that was built nineteen sixteen. And there are, there are some water issues, some maintenance issues that need to happen. It is not our intent whatsoever to change the aesthetic look of the outside of that building whatsoever. Everything we're going to try to do is geared toward, um, building, uh, uh, building the opportunity for that, uh, structure to be able to to continue standing for another hundred years and be a fixture in our community. So it's not our plan at all to change the exterior aesthetics or look of the historic building.
Okay, great, um, I know you're just at the very initial, very initial concepts of design, but I'm just curious, I, you know, you mentioned the maintenance needs in the building, which, you know, we all know nineteen sixteen are going to be huge. Um, and the renovation's going to be huge, just curious if and when you think you might have estimates on cost, um, and kind of timeframe of next steps.
Yeah, well, I got to tell you, your city manager's doing a great job because he foresaw the 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 need to answer that question and has already been hou- hounding me about that. Um, in general, the the first plan that we moved forward, when I went to my board of directors and said, I'd like the opportunity to try and acquire this this site. Um, I was cast a number, um, we've, um, found that four hundred dollars a square foot for new construction is really, excuse me, is really what we need to plan for, for, um, when we do new new space. And I was told to figure on a cost factor of a hundred seventy-five dollars per square foot for remodel, uh, space. And so those are the factors that we've operated on from the start for what it looks like in our projections for the, can we afford to to make this move? Can we afford to do this? Um, one of the things that we've had success with and and we intend to do in this project is that we operate under a contracting system where we do design, build or, uh, con- a a general contractor at risk. So we ask our contractor to come on board during the design phase to help us through that, give us the opportunity to make good decisions about value engineering things or ha- managing costs as we arrive at what the final plan is. And at that point, uh, when when we lock that down, we ask the contractor to cast us a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. we ask the contractor to cast us a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. And then from that point, when we sign into that contract, that price is guaranteed to us unless there are change orders along the way that are approved by both us and the general contractor. And so that's the construction format or the contractor relationship that we'll have with the general contractors. Because we want them involved in the design process, it's one of the next things that we're going to do is work forward with getting an RFP together and looking for the opportunity to sign on with a general contractor. We worked with Nun Construction was our general contractor on Station Three. FCI was our general contractor with the training facility that we've just built down the hill from this building. And in both cases, we saw huge benefit from having that guaranteed maximum price. And we felt like that provided us some assurances and some protection in what it looked like for how we were going to build into that project and making a good decision about, can we afford this at at the point that we're signing on and saying, yeah, let's let's do this, let's let's go with this project. So that's that's what our plan is and how that looks.
Hal, Chief, if I may, just to put a couple of comments on this because I had raised my hand to actually talk about this this part, especially from the city perspective. So the council did give direction for the for the city to meet with the fire district and talk about what space needs would be for a police station and what that would look like. We have not talked price specifically. We talked about it a little bit in overview when I I talked with Chief at the very beginning when we were beginning this process of what it might look like of just saying that, you know, for cost would be a big component, obviously, that we couldn't go into something that would cost us more as an option than anything than another option might be if we had to rehab our building or build a new building. So we had a little bit of those costs, the cost discussions as a as a preemptive talk. But we are at the point now where Chief Brammer, I'm going to confirm it. If I misspeak, let me know, but I think that we have a a site plan in regards, let me take that back, a office design for your space needs that that will work for you in the future. See, you're shaking your head, so that's where we're at. The next step would be for me to meet with Chief and really begin talking price, what he believes it would cost, what that would look like, how that cost structure would work. Based on the Chief saying that this would work for him in a office space analysis, my recommendation would be that we have those discussions to find out what cost is because I don't think the council could make an informed decision or could we make an informed recommendation to the council without knowing what the cost structure might look like and what this possible co-location might be financially to the city. So I I bring that up as a part to where, as I always talk with council, we have off-ramps, and we've moved to the next part of that highway. If this is something that the council would like to continue to discuss, I think that it is worth us taking a look at and seeing what that cost would be for the spatial needs that we just saw and have those discussions. So that would be my recommendation, that we would continue to have those cost discussions and then come back to council. Obviously, let you know what we found out, how much it's going to cost, how that might be structured before making a another informed decision whether we want to continue or discontinue with this proposed partnership.
I would like to open a chart board because we haven't had much discussion. This is the first time we've seen this drawing as well. And so I want to invite you to make comments or ask questions if you have any. I know we have a board meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. So you may want to discuss, we will discuss it then, but do you have anything you want to share today?
I think that where we're at with the status now, having the building, and we're able to move through the city process. Before, it was just a whole lot of speculation, guessing, questioning, what if, how can you, whatever. We're now, we're in a position where we can actually move forward and ask pertinent, specific questions and get specific answers. And I I hear that that's, you know, actually starting to take place because we can't, as Jose just mentioned, we can't make decisions if we don't have information. And that's basically where we're at. It's a good move. Thanks, Hal.
I think it's good that a bunch of other people are listening because I think you're answering a lot of questions. I mean, I personally met with people in that area and talked with them and that. I think there's just things we didn't know, can't tell you if we don't know. So I think that's the process we're going through right now. So we're, you know, allowing people to hear what we are thinking and stuff like that.
You know, I think what comes to mind, and and one of the things that that I think that are our group of folks in the community that are concerned about this is that they they really are looking for answers. You know, they want they wanted me to give them the the site plan and and drawings and things before those had even been created. And I know that it's been a frustrating process for you all not having the opportunity to see what it is that that we're thinking of doing. In in the wake of that, we feel like we're, a new day is dawning for us. Now that we own the building, we feel like we're in a position to be able to drive the dialogue on this project as we move forward, as we move toward preparing a a plan that we think will work, that that we think is suitable to to deliver to the city for consideration. And so I think that one of the things that we're going to talk about at a board meeting next week, Tuesday, that I really want to start doing is regularly interval meetings where we invite the public to come in and have the opportunity to comment on this because we can't be responsive to their concerns and be considerate of the concerns that that they raise as we develop this plan unless we have some sort of a forum to hear that. I I heard the community loud and clear while we were all on the Zoom meeting with the that the nine R folks hosted, which was, please give us an opportunity to weigh in. Please give us the opportunity to be able to voice our concerns with them. And and I think that you can see and hear from the way that we've explained what what it is that you looked at today that that we are inclined to make changes in the way that we're planning on doing things based on what those concerns are. We gave up part of this property in order to to meet up to the concerns about the trees and about the use of the park. We we are very concerned about the traffic flow issues that the residents and and folks that have businesses are are concerned about as well and know that we're going to have to come up with a plan to solve that. And so I think moving forward, one of the things that we very much want to do is we want to figure out how to to best create a forum in which the community can continue to weigh in, talk with us about what their concerns are, and move forward. That probably isn't going to be, we just don't think you should do this and you should stop, but we very much want to hear what the concerns are so we can try to answer to this. And if at the end of the day, we find ourselves in an insurmountable place where we can't satisfy the community's needs and we can't get to the point where we can legitimately check all those boxes and meet the community development needs, we understand that we won't be able to build this this facility. So I think that moving forward, now that we we're in a position where we have control and we're, we feel like we're at the time where it makes sense for us to start investing the money that it's going to take to build toward getting this facility done, I I really think that 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 it's a new day as far as the amount of public input that we can take also. And so that's, that's going to be my recommendation to our board next week is I really think that that we need to figure out some sort of a forum where the community can truly get what they were asking for. I mean, most of the comments associated with the nine R thing were, didn't didn't have nearly as much to do with the facility itself as it did. We want the opportunity to be able to speak out about this. I know it's been frustrating while we've been doing these work sessions and and we don't provide an opportunity for public comment. But we we want to provide that opportunity for public comment. We want to hear what the issues are. We want to get the opportunity to be able to take as many of them in and process through that and and provide solutions to those as we can. That's what our commitment is moving forward.
I'm very glad that you're that, that you're going to be inviting, and I'm sure the rest of council staff is too because it not only gives you an opportunity to hear it, but it gives us some opportunity. And then somewhere along the way, it'll be coming to us, and we'll be doing that same kind of thing. So we'll be hearing the comments and we'll be hearing the shifts and the changes and objections or the or the agreements that come along with all of that. So I I appreciate that, and I appreciate the information you provided to us today because we've been as much in the dark as anyone else about the plans and where you're going with it. So it gives a little bit different perspective to be able to have something concrete to discuss or to think about.
So we've been very excited, you know, we've been working on this for twenty years that I'm aware of. We just, we really want to move forward, we want to be excited about it. And we, that's why these work sessions are so important, which is kind of a nice way into this discussion about, you know, moving forward with our community connections and joint efforts. And so we want to continue this relationship, whether you consider to put the police department in there or not. We'd like you to seriously think about that. I think it would enrich our community, but know that our board, we are super excited about this project. And so we're going to do what's best for the community, we always have, and we will. I'm going to invite anybody else. I don't know, Patty, you have anything you want to contribute or Lyle?
I'm excited too. I think, like everyone has said, we have listened, got the ski hill. I didn't know how to go down as the Grinch who stole the ski hill. Or the guy who's cut down the trees. But the real, our real mission, mission is to get to people that need us as quickly as we can. And so that is, and I know we've all talked about that, that is our mission. And so all of these other things of what the facade looks like, you know, we've got to always go back to, how fast can we get to Bud when he needs us?
I've never had the need before, but. All of our days are covered.
It's quality of service too. You know, it's, we're trying to build a facility that meets the needs of a growing community, and we see it. I mean, I've lived here for a long time, and I've seen a seen a big change since nineteen seventy-eight. So our community has grown exponentially, and the needs have as well. So I applaud the chief for meeting those needs. I mean, he's really stepped up to what we've asked him to do as a board. And so it's been tough, it's been uphill, but he has succeeded in our eyes. So we're very proud of you. Are you good with moving on to the next?
Yeah.
That we're pressured for time.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm glad to answer any other questions that you've got. And I I think that it's a worthwhile thing. I I mean, I think this is a good segue into the community connection thing because I I think that there's some really great successes that have been going on currently that that I I know some of you are are aware of, others may not be. So I think it's worthwhile to talk about that because we, you know, we 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 talked about, ab- absent the need to replace our downtown fire station, we talked about the need for the the city council and the fire board to meet on a regular basis more anyway. And so I think that we wanted to to bring light to some successes that have happened recently. Maybe maybe one of them, and and I I don't know if if Barbara and Melissa want to talk at all about this, but one of the things that we've had as a recent really big success is the opportunities that that we're building into with the wildfire and watershed protection fund and some successes with that. And I'll, you guys are both shaking your heads, so I love it if you guys can talk a little bit about that because I I think it's worthwhile for the community to get to hear about that as well.
Sure, sure, I'll jump in. I I will say that when Melissa and I, as part of the working group, our first meeting, it was a smaller group, we had a few other people there. And I know my comment was, nothing happens without the fire district. So we need Hal as part of this working group. And there had been some reservations, I think, in the past over how things were implemented. But Hal, I will say you were really good at coming in, sharing your commitment, and I think also encouraging other fire district chiefs to think about coming on board. And and what I'm hearing is now they're also more interested in it. So I I recognize that, that, you know, we can't do a watershed and wildfire protection fund without the fire district. The other thing I think is that, you know, we're looking at, the fire district is also managing one of the big grants that you're still in negotiation for on the metrics that will really work on mitigation with the private landowners to help protect our our, the Florida watershed. So we're looking forward to that. And then, you know, the work at homeless camp and the work at the Purple Cliffs. And then we're at the area out in west, west in the county, particularly where we have limited evacuation routes. So I think it's a great example of three entities coming together, putting in resources, and working to create something that protects all of us. So it's been a real pleasure working with you.
Yeah, I would add too that I think the wildfire watershed protection fund is just a really great example of the region-wide, community-wide efforts at collaboration. And the DFPD certainly is an integral part of that, as Barbara was saying. But it just shows that the issues that we're dealing with here around fire, they aren't just, obviously, just related just to the city of Durango. The fires don't stay within our borders, so it's the it's the whole region. And I think it's really been an innovative collaborative approach. It's a good example of how we can work together that other, you know, communities surrounding us are seeing and the benefits of that, and I think it's really great. And it brings me back to an issue that I wanted to discuss that I'm very, or just highlight that I see great potential for, is this opportunity in these potential design plans for community spaces and for the community to collaborate and work together. It it's really needed in our community to have the ability to meet and to get to gather that many people on for community-wide issues. And I just wanted to kind of bring that also up as an opportunity to suggest that I think that's significant. I think that provides great opportunity for the city of Durango and surrounding areas and multiple organizations community-wide.
Perfect. Well, I I got to tell you, you know, I was, it's it's sort of a fire chief's dream almost to get the phone call from the city council and the county commission asking if you can come to the table to talk about how they can both get on board with assisting with fire mitigation stuff. I mean, that's, that's a, that's, that's a phone call that that was wonderful to get. And that I I've learned a great deal from being involved in in that collaboration as well. But I think that one of the greatest things about it is that we're already starting to see success because we we knew that the the success overall with this thing was going to be in in our ability to garner enough interest from those entities that provide grant funding to draw in a great deal of money because the fire mitigation needs are going to take a great deal more than any of us have in our budgets to be able to support that. And we already are seeing some huge successes. The 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 Florida watershed grant funding, we got approved for that. And almost immediately, we we haven't even formally accepted that grant yet, and they have doubled the amount of money that is associated with that now. We think that we're going to get nearly half a million dollars available to the community in order to do that. And that's money directly responsible to go toward assisting private property owners in doing the right thing with mitigating their properties so that we don't have wildfires that get out of control. You know, we know that our federal partners have a a large budget for doing that and are doing a good job with mitigation work. We know that the state has programs and and some opportunities to actually make things happen. But the 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 lack of connection there has always been with, how do we fund those projects on privately owned parcels that people don't have the money to do the mitigation work they need? And we're, we we're seeing successes now with with the opportunity to bring that money to this community. In a similar fashion, I think it's worthwhile to point out a lot of the other stuff that we're working together on. Chief Black reminded me the other day of a a a recent deal that we struck. We got, we got contacted by by the the water department to, they were interested in putting, receiving antenna. And apparently, the technology has has advanced now to where they can, through an antenna system, get the water meter readings off of water meters in an area. And our Station Three is the perfect site to do that in the area around Brad and 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 that whole area. And so we And so we've been working, uh, through the water, or through the city with the water department to get that project done. They're going to have, uh, a receiving antenna on our site so that they have the opportunity to be able to, to read all those meters and things like that. Um, I, I, another, uh, collaboration that's happening that will certainly help members of our community as a whole is in similar fashion because we're, um, spread on, on a very intentional basis through the community. Um, we're working with one of the local internet providers to, uh, provide better internet reception in areas. This doesn't necessarily happen so much in the city, but in the county, um, especially in remote areas, the fire stations tend to be perfectly located to be able to, um, support equipment that then, uh, goes on and provides internet service capability to, to neighborhoods and, and home areas around there. So I think that, um, one, one of the big reasons why I was excited that Kathy brought up the opportunity to talk about all these collaborations is because I think that you can consistently count on the fact that we as an organization are going to work to try to do the right thing. And that we're going to be a great agency for you to partner with, to bring your police department into the fold on this thing. I think that we've got a tremendous opportunity as a community to, to move toward this thing. We already are so closely tied that you almost can't tell the difference between the two of us in, in, in a lot of areas. And I think that we really have a great opportunity to be able to develop something here and build into a concept that's, that's, that's going to be great for the city. It's going to be great for the fire district and it's going to be great for our community. And so, um, with that being said, um, I, 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 I'm really looking forward to developing a partnership more and getting to the point where we can start having the conversations about whether or not we can gain your support in, in bringing the, the police department in as a partner agency in this facility.
Do you see any other activities or projects that you want to share with us that potentially would impact the fire department or our response to the community? I mean, I think that's what these work sessions are really going to be about is building that relationship and transparency and, you know, uh, how we can work together.
I don't, at this time, I mean, we came to this for, for this discussion, not prepared to talk about everything else. But if staff or other counselors have something, that would be great. Don't see.
Okay. All right. No worries. So if there's no other comments? No, I'm going to call this meeting then. Well, let's set our next work session. I know over the holidays, it was a bit tough, you know, with Christmas, uh, and whatnot. So you want to look to a meeting in February then?
I, yeah, I think you'll probably have to do a doodle. We are, February council is pretty full. But, um, okay, I think we'll have to do a doodle type of.
I'll work with Melissa then.
Yeah, we've had success working through Mr. Matt Gil's office with, with Melissa on that. Can, can we just do that? And move forward.
That's, that's the best way. We're kind of left in a cat's, you know, and we have Melissa. We don't have, we have Melissa Porch. We don't have anybody to help corral us. So.
And, and if we're unable to do, um, February, I, I'd suggest let's target the first, first week or so in March.
Yeah, we'll just, I agree, but we'll just have to look at the calendars because as I said, February is kind of crazy. We're working on our strategic plan. We have a team building exercise. We have our normal city council meetings and so.
What? You've got to do regular business.
As well.
Well, thank you. I want to say thank you to all of the council for coming today and providing this time and having a conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you guys.
Do we have time before? It's, yeah, or do you want to do it after?